Good evening, the town hall meeting of Thursday, April 19th will come to order. Thank you all for being here this evening, both residents and professional staff. We're going to begin this evening with a historical perspective presented by Mr. Jack Ritter. Those of you who were at a previous town hall meeting, it was received with such rave reviews, we have asked Mr. Ritter to come back. We have very few residents who have the length and the tenure of residency that Mr. Ritter does, so, Mr. Ritter, the floor is yours.
There's an envelope over here, I'm gonna ask you a question. How many people live in Temple Terrace since sometime in the 40s? Any? How about 50s? Okay, well, that's fine. I came here December the 15th, 1945. About that height. Went to grade school over here, what is now Moncento, went through sixth grade there, so that kind of thing. But recently, in Temple Terrace, we had a little tragedy. They tore down the Club Moroccan. Knowing it in, or where it is, or whatever the function was, somebody tell me.
It was over at Florida College, and I might have seen it, was it the old council, city council building? I'm sweating, boy, I knew that from the last view. It was over there.
You're reading my notes. But seriously, Club Moroccan was built in the early 20s, it was a gambling casino. When I came to Temple Terrace, it was just a building, and City Hall was in there. It's all terraced up board, two-story structure, only part of it was two-story. And the council chamber was on the second floor, in the back. And I brought a picture tonight, probably you'll see some of the, you know, people in the stage. It was a unique building. It was a fountain, on the inside, on ground floor, toward the back, toward the pool, that our illustrious city managers managed to capture and box up, and I don't know what he's gonna do, would auction it off, or give it to somebody, but it was a beautiful fountain. And around that fountain, when I was a kid, we used to have ping pong tables, believe it or not. And in that building, they had a dumbwaiter. Anybody know what dumbwaiter is, or you're all too young? We used to get in it, go up to the second floor, and then get off, okay? Then go down. The kids could do a lot of things. It used to have a lot of civic association functions in that building. Civic association in the city? What the hell was that about? It was a way of raising money and taking care of charities from this. And one time, my father was the head of it, and he had a casino night, in the old casino, alright? Roulette wheels, and crap tables, and a whole 18 yard. But it was a BYOB function. You know what that is? Okay, the kids my age, eight and 10 years of age, used to shovel around ice buckets, and glasses, and, you know, Coca-Cola, seven up, whatever. And these things would raise five to 10,000 dollars in the early 50s. That was a lot of money. But that was what the building looked like. It was huge. Here's a picture of the building, alright? That part, it's the front part of the building. You can tell that picture was made when?
It was made in the early 50s.
You see the 1957 Chevrolet? That should give you a clue. That picture is probably made 58, 59, 60, okay? And at that time, the city manager was a retired Army officer, alright? Frank Moses. And his predecessor, believe it or not, was also a retired Army officer, Barry Wordwell. And I don't know how many years he served, but he was my boss when I used to read war leaders in Temple Terrace for nickel apiece. Boy, I loved it, when they start building houses out here, you go right down the street, five or six, boy, that's quick money. Here's another picture of Club Moroccan before the pool was put in. This is the back side. And on this side, on the second floor, is where the council chambers were. And I went to several council meetings back in the 70s. There. Have an interesting concept. You can see that that's an old picture. Can anybody identify that car? Tom? Any? We'll give you time to research that.
I have no idea what it is.
It was before my time. But you know, Temple Terrace, when I came, there were about 300 people there, according to the census. I don't know who took the census, but somebody said, probably mixed in with birds, a few cows. At that time, we had horses. Right over here, behind the country club's maintenance facility, was a house with a stable. We used to go over and get on the horses, and if the horse liked it, that was okay, you could ride around in the stalls there. Then, there were oak trees there, you'd go over and scrape the off, and you'd just jump up on the oak tree, and the horse would climb down. But it was a place for kids to grow up. In those days, we entertained ourselves. We didn't have a rec center in Temple Terrace. We were lucky, Florida College built a basketball court. We didn't have a tennis court. We had a swimming pool and a golf course. The kids in Temple Terrace, in those days, were golfers and swimmers. Some were students. Yet, when we went to high school from here, we all went to Hillsborough, except those that went to private school, graduate academy. And the football team was made up of guys from Seminole Heights and where have you, Slade, Junior High. We in Temple Terrace made up the swimming team and the golf team. It was great. You know, you'd get out of Southern Curie, you'd come home, you'd go play golf, you'd go to the swimming pool and practice. That was great. Coach showed up an hour and a half after school was out. Bus coach in the team, the kids that were swimming, and the kids that were playing golf. Alright? In this picture here, kinda interesting, there's one here I saw in a hallway, and as I was reading some history on this picture, right here, there's a guy by the name of Lawrence Parry. He happened to be a neighbor of mine, was still alive when I was a kid. And he was with the Tampa Tribune at the time. He was German. And a unique picture, and this picture is probably from sometime in the late 20s. Temple Terrace, very interesting, I think all of you heard me last time that we're here. We talked about the bridge across 56th Street, and so on. We'll talk a little bit more about Bennett Store. Anybody remember Bennett Store? Temple Terrace Grocery Store. Who said we didn't have one? There it is. We used to get off the school bus in junior high school there, and get a pickle and a Pepsi for a dime, and walk home, alright? There's Bennett Store. Made after Tommy Bennett and his wife, he ran it, and later bought a house. They lived behind this at one time. Bought a house over here in South Glen, Arvin, it's been remodeled. But that little store was the post office at one time. And we did have a telephone exchange out here, believe it or not. Letter here at the back is a Tennessee telephone exchange. It also had a library in there at one time. So there's a lot of things that have changed. Back in the days of old, we had one cop in Temple Terrace who graduated from being a night watchman, riding around on a bicycle, punching and blocking here, there, and y'know. I don't know if he was working for the builder or the city. Name was Bob Nell. Nice old man. He didn't chase you down as a kid, doing something wrong, driving your car too fast. Did you hear that, Tom? He went and knocked on my father's door, and said, "I think your son," and I had a brother a year older, he couldn't identify either one of us, "I think one of your sons is stealing." He left. He come home. Whoever came home first, I just got my father's wreck, he says, "Were you driving the car?" Your brother's up. "No, no, I was with someone, sir." He said, "Okay." I came home later, and he said, "Put the keys on the table." That meant I didn't drive until he told me I could pick up the keys. But the cop used to hang out here. Anybody know what that is? Anybody remember that? The old gas station, the McCartney's Gas Station, right up here, right behind where Burger King is, to the east side. It was there. Had a canopy. People lived upstairs, the second floor, and the cop used to sit out here, just beyond the gas pumps, in his car, looking west, blocking people with his eyes, because they didn't have radars in those days. If he thought you were speeding, hitting his car, this was another cop by the name of Kennedy, had an old 1930, ain't no sound. It was all souped up, and he put the light up on the top, and he'd go racing out Temple Terrace Highway, Boulder Parkway, Temple Terrace Highway. He'd go racing out, then pull motors, and he'd look. The guy, "Is this a cop car? Does he live? Cause he didn't have police on him." Well, I made a mistake one time, he pulled over a man speeding in one of the streets here in Temple Terrace, and he gave him a tick. The man said to him, "You know who I am?" He said, "No, sir." He's frightened. He said, "You know who I am?" He said, "I'm the mayor, I'm Ray Knopkin." He said, "It doesn't matter." Next day, it was fire. I guess. It doesn't matter, does it?
It shouldn't matter.
It shouldn't, but it did, in those days. Ray Knopkin's family, just as his side, Knopkin's widow still lives here in Temple Terrace. There was a number of years difference in their age. And the Knopkin brothers inherited Garden and Memory Cemetery. It's a family-owned process, okay? That goes way back now. Anybody know what this is? Aren't you long-time residents? Don't know. They used to be the maintenance farm for the country club and the city. It's combined. There's a fire engine there, and that's a class in Temple Terrace Elementary School about 1953. I'm in that picture somewhere, and I want somebody to identify it. But I used to start the fire engine there on Saturdays. Fire engine had to be started, and you had to prime it, bag it, and you'd do everything. And it sat up there in this facility. If there was a fire, everybody raced up to the building to find out what the fire was. Big chalkboard, you wrote on there where it was, okay? Tom Barone's house. No address, because we didn't have street signs? Wasn't that it? You knew whose place was on fire, or a lot, or whatever. And in the summertime, all the kids in Temple Terrace went to the pool. So we went in our bathing suits, jeep, and pulled hoses for the fire call. They wouldn't let us get close to the fire, but anyway, we precipitated. This picture. And the horn for the fire is up on a water tower. Anybody know we had a water tower in Temple Terrace? Right up here behind the community church, like there where the well or pumping station is today. Alright, I talked about the council chamber, just a second ago. Here's a picture from that era, 19, it says here, 1977. I wasn't around at that time. Most of the people in this picture are dead. Mayor at that time was Bondi, and Frank Moses is sitting here on the end. And Bob Owen, anybody know Bob Owen? He used to be the president of Florida College, still lives here in Temple Terrace. It's 100 years old. What, 87, 88?
It's pretty developed.
But Temple Terrace is growing, as you can see. Here's the original plaque of Temple Terrace. Goes from the river on the south, to Druid Hills on the north. Everybody know where Druid Hills is? Isn't that something? And from 56th Street and Druid, east to the river. That was it. And somebody said to me the other day, when I was looking at this thing, and they were around, he said, "Was this part of Temple Terrace over here?" It was, but it wasn't platted, it was still acre. And when I was a kid, all of this over here was orange groves. Even back, you heard about the bridge before, we used to go out, 56th Street north, you got to what is Fowler Avenue, and you had a choice. You could either turn right and go to Orange Road, 311. Or you could go straight ahead on a dirt road, or turn left and go toward Henderson Field, where Bush Gardens is today. It was the second World War airstrip. Back in 55, we used to race our cars, build runways, until Augie Bush bought the property, and he plowed it out for safety, not to get even with kids, and he built some drag strip out on that highway. But Temple Terrace, again, was a great place to grow up. You knew everybody. You didn't even have to lock the doors on your house. We didn't lock the doors until the mid-50s. But that was Temple Terrace in those days. Used to climb trees here, fall out, somebody would rescue you, take you to the hospital, get you repaired, get you home. It was interesting. Questions? Anybody have a question about Temple Terrace? Why are we here? What are we doing? But today, as you can see, Temple Terrace is this. We went from 300 people, in my day, 1945, and Temple Terrace is still this, to 26,000 today. And going back here to this, north of Druid Hills, there's nothing but orange groves. And a man lived right back here, the truck over the golf course. And his first name, or his title, was Kern. He didn't live in Temple Terrace, but he went to the council meetings. He'd tell the council how stupid they were, "Oh, you don't want to do that, you want to do this." And he was a caretaker for all this growth back in here. Beautiful growth. But all the groves that were in here, when I was a child, were burned out. Had a couple that lived around the corner from me, right here, at the Green on First Hollow Golf Course by the name of McSwen. They had a big packing house in Temple Terrace Highway, west, top of the hill, when you're going toward Nebraska Avenue, on the north side. And all back in there was just groves. Used to pick the fruit, you'd go up there, and you could buy a basket of fruit, big baskets. And it was interesting. I mean, I guess if you were from Temple Terrace, and McSwenies knew you, you probably got it for nothing. But, you know, Temple Terrace as a kid was great. I'll tell a quick story about a friend of mine who does live in Temple Terrace today, had a date with a young lady that lived on Sunny Side. Everybody know where Sunny Side is? And he lived in Seminole Heights. Well, it happened to be in the wintertime, it was dark. No street lights, no street signs. He got lost. He had to go all the way back to Nebraska Avenue, find a payphone to call her, and say, "Where is this house of schmuck's?" But we go back to telling people who called you wanting directions, that were coming from Nebraska, Florida Avenue, what have you. You tell them you go through two flashing lights, and you start counting the streets on the right and the left. First flashing light was at 40, at the Temple Terrace Highway. The second one was at 56, Bull. And then, when the bastards built their house on the south side in the redevelopment area, back in the late 40s, early 50s, that was a better landmark, rather than just a flashing light. Because at night, the house was lit up, it was beautiful. They lived in it three months out of the year. He was a liquor distributor and mayor. There's Temple Terrace in a nutshell. That's what I remember as a child, and notice, I did this without any script, and I'm prepared to go further if everybody wants me to, but I think the mayor tells me it's time to shut up. But after, we're gonna have a test, so hopefully, everybody pays attention.
Thank you, Mr. Ritter. Next, I wanted to host a public discussion around our proposed charter revisions, and I would ask city manager Stevenson to just give a brief overview on where we are in the process to date, and then open it up for citizen comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Back in, last year in September, October, it was a decision by council to pursue reviewing our charter, our city charter that hadn't been done for some time. At that point in time, council, each appointed a member to a committee that would be charged with reviewing our charter. And that committee has convened back at the end of the year, about December, January, I think. They kinda finished up the tasks that they were given. And since then, city council has tried to now ascertain what they want to put on the ballot this coming November. This is a referendum. It would have to be voted by the voters of the city of Temple Terrace, for either approval or denial. It will be set up. We do not have a sample ballot, we're working on the ordinance right now. There is available, and I see Robert passing them out, there is a draft red line of the existing charter, and the changes, the proposed changes, that council is currently reviewing. With that, we've got, Mr. Gil Schisler is here with us this evening. He has offered to kinda run through this thing, and kinda highlight those changes. With that, I'll let Gil kind of explain that, and certainly open this thing up for questions. One of the things that we're required to do by charter, by the statute, is to make sure that the public is as well-informed about all these proposed changes as possible. So, we're trying to do that. Part of our outreach is to present to the community the proposed changes to the charter as it comes up in November for the referendum. But Gil, if you wanna, if you would, just kinda give us some highlights about what we're doing. I'll be quiet, cause I'll start stealing your thunder.
As Charles has indicated, the charter review, we had met eight or nine times, and we decided we'd begin to start convening, and we're all the way through. We have an opportunity that hasn't been taken since I teach. It was in the ages, I believe, was the last time it was reviewed. I don't know if it's a big day, but there was some issues that needed to be addressed. There were some legal issues, there's some grammar issues, there's some gender issues. I don't know. Is that? Is that? Sorry? There was, there were legal issues and grammar issues that need to be addressed. And then there were some, there were some, just some, well, we just hit our housekeeping, if you will. Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna touch on some of these smaller issues first, like the gender issues, and there were times when it was strictly his. And so, you know, we have a female mayor, we have female council members, so we changed the his's to his and her. Along with that, and there were some grammar, like "the," "the am," and stuff like that. You see these in the red line version. In addition to that, there were some technically, technical errors, which are now no longer allowed by state statute. Or, I think there were three, but two of I can think of off the top of my head, was the residency requirement for somebody to be eligible to run for office originally. It used to be two years, state statute, or should I say, Attorney General opinions, is you can't do it any more than one year. So that's a change that we institute, that we recommended. The other was dealt with with a secret ballot. When, for example, a member of council were to resign, or pass on, or whatever, there was a vacancy bill, there was terminology in there, where the existing council would use a secret ballot. Well, secret ballots aren't permitted anymore. Again, an Attorney General opinion, that we needed to go in and change that. But in order to change anything in the document, you have to bring it before the public, so it has to wait until we come up with a referendum to do so. There was questions regarding the term limits that we tried to address. Now, currently, or under the existing charter, a council member can serve no more than two consecutive four-year terms, and then at that point, they cannot seek reelection for a two-year period. Now, that became somewhat problematic, in that, okay, so if you can't seek reelection for two years, it was the, the legal opinions rendered said that, okay, you can't even campaign during that time period, cause that's technically seeking. So, we made the recommendation to say that you could not hold the same, well, hold office for the two-year period. And that, you're counting days, but you, the calendar just works out that way, that you could actually physically campaign a year and eight months later, okay? Okay, sorry. You could, you'd be able to start campaigning a year and eight months later, as opposed to having to wait essentially for two full, for a full, four-year cycle. So, that just clarifies it a little bit. Now, the correlated, or related to that, was the fact that there was never any verbiage in the charter, that said, "When does a newly-elected council member and/or mayor take office?" So we tried to clarify that. We've had instances, I believe, where the next meeting after an election, we were ready to install that person, but we had not received certified results from the supervisory election. So technically speaking, you really couldn't do that. So, we added verbiage in there to clarify that, and it's two, I think it's the second meeting after the election, gives everybody time to get the election certified, and everybody has, has a, to be installed at that point. That is, before I go into the major issue, the referendum has to be set up as what's called a single question, and I'm sure I'm messing this up, Pam, but it can only, a referendum can only basically cover one issue at a time. So, we've got three main issues, or three main basic referendums, that I know Pam's trying to craft. One deals with the mayor/council structure. One deals with the term limits and the taking office, which is essentially one item. And then the third one would deal with Scrivner issues and legal issues, giving council the authority to fix those. Cause, you know, we haven't had one in a long time, we may not have one for several years, and legislature changes rules as we go along, and it'd be nice to be in compliance with our state mandates. So, alright, now that leaves us with the biggest change in the charter that we're working on. As everybody knows, we currently have five council members and a mayor. Five voting council members and a non-voting mayor. It has been historically, I don't say the word complaint, but it's been an issue where the mayor just didn't have the right to vote, didn't have an opportunity to vote, they could express their opinion, and we took that opportunity to say, okay, how can we modify this? What can we do? Okay, so we approached a whole slew of options. Eliminate the mayor position. Yeah? People in the city community who spoke was, "Well, wait a minute. We like our mayor concept. We like the fact that Temple Terrace has a mayor." Granted, there, it's, it's, it gives the representative of the city to go out into public and be the face of the city in another organization. Well, okay, we'll run it then like the city, like the county commission, and we'll have a rotating mayor type concept. Well, what if you have somebody that doesn't want to be a mayor? And you have somebody who does want to, you know, and so you run into problems, well, how's that person appointed? And how do you make sure that they're putting forth? The people who want to be mayor in this city have historically always wanted to be the face of the city. I remember Bob Woodard days, and Joe Frati days, Mayor Harada. They really want the opportunity to put the good forth, the good faith of the city, you know, the good face on for the city. So, we came up with the idea of reduce the number of council members to four, add the mayor as a voting member, okay? And that's the crux of the major change. A side note to that was, the old structure gave the mayor the opportunity to actually veto an ordinance or an ordinance, oh, just an ordinance, I think it was, if they did not like, if they felt strongly against it. And so, say somebody, an ordinance passed three to two, the mayor didn't like it, they could, mayor could technically veto it, and that had to come back to council, and it had to pass then by a 4-1 vote, otherwise it'd never happen. So, that went down, and that would become a problematic issue if we, in the event that the vice mayor was then, the mayor left, the vice mayor came in, and the vice mayor voted, cause he was still a council person at that point. He didn't like it, he could actually technically veto- He didn't like it, he could actually technically veto it, and then bring it back, and it would never pass the next time. So it clarified that. We removed the veto option, or veto capability. But we changed from a five council members and a non-voting mayor to four council members and a voting mayor. Terms, no change. Two-four-year, two-four-year consecutive terms, then you gotta sit out for two years. Okay? Succession from a vice mayor still exists, so that there's no, there's no, there's always continuity in the leadership within the city. And that basically is one whole question, and again, I know, I know Mrs. Shahn is working diligently to try and come up with the proper terminology to craft it, so it's, A, it's not confusing, and B, it conforms to the single issue. But she feels confident that she can put that, yeah? I guess that, at a 30,000-foot level, is, is the changes that were recommended. We, we met, like I said, nine, 10 times, numerous red line revisions. I know Cheryl Noonan and her staff were just so crazy trying to figure out what you guys are doing, but it, we came together in consensus with it, and we presented it back to city council. Council at that point asked us to condense it, because if you looked at first blush, it's like 20 items here. Okay? But there's some similarity in many of them, they come under one question. And we think if we get it down to three questions, we'll be, we'll be, you know, concise enough so that the voter in November doesn't get too tired, fatigued. We'll take the time and read the answers, or get it right, though.
Thank you, Mr. Schessler. We do have one form from Mr. John Noonan to speak to this issue. Mr. Noonan?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to speak in favor of retaining the mayor's power to veto and the mayor's power to adopt measures passed by the city council. I think that enables the mayor to serve as a kind of upper chamber of the legislature, as it were, something like the House of Lords in Great Britain. The House of Commons does all the work, the House of Lords is largely ceremonial, but on rare occasions, it can step in and block action from taking place. And I wonder, since we have Mr. Chalurra here, maybe he could say whether he was ever tempted to use the veto power of the mayor's office, or to refuse to sign an ordinance passed by city council. I think, since we do have very, very good people who serve as mayor, it's an additional protection against foolish, hasty, popular legislation that might in the long run be unwise, and which the mayor would have a hard time selling to the public. So I'm in favor of that check on the power of the city council, and I think there's probably no chance of changing the charter revisions at this point. But I'd like to know whether there is any history in Temple Terrace of the mayor using veto power or the power of adoption by refusing to sign an ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Noonan. And Mr. Berlin?
Okay. Robert Berlin, Temple Terrace. When these changes are approved, I know that in the fall, we are, we're gonna have a election for two empty city councils and one person running for another term. When are the changes going to take effect in regard to reducing the council down to five?
If this passed in November, Mr. Berlin, it would be two years from now, so it would not be the November elections, because this will be on the ballot in this November election. So we will still be electing three council members this term. If it passes successfully, it will be the subsequent, it will be 2020 election.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak on the charter Seeing none, we do have, as we move to open discussion, the first form I have is from Don Balaban. Mr. Balaban?
My name is Don Balaban. I live at 9410 Allen Brook Street, Temple Terrace. I've lived there 33 years, I think we annexed about 25 years from Temple Terrace. Very familiar with the area. I retired from the sheriff's office, Hillsborough County, 35 years. First off, I wanna make a very good statement for the mayor and the councilmen, and everybody, from the police department to the management. Y'all doing a great job. And that's not just for me, that's from all of your neighbors and your voters in our area, River Run and Roland Terrace. We're very happy to see the teamwork and what you're trying to do to turn the ship around. And I wanted to just comment on a few things and throw some ideas at you. God gave me the ability to market things and see things, and I'm very successful in the private world. And I came to many meetings in Temple Terrace. I had a Walmart, lost it by one vote. We had Home Depot twice, lost that. Boy, everybody wishes we had them now. Now we gotta drive a long ways to go there. But I wanted to comment, when we got annexed years ago, I worked with Pat Beam, we got the highway widened, we ended up getting the tunnels for the golf carts. And I had TECO lined up along with the county and E.L.A.P., and we were, we made the papers for the whole state of Florida. We were gonna get Sun City a run for the money. We were gonna be a golf cart, pedestrian bicycle-friendly community, tying a whole area together, including the diamond, at that time, of Temple Terrace, which was the rec center. That was the thing that really drew a lot of people. We had one of the nicest, and it's still nice, but we had the best rec center probably in the state of Florida, when we got that big grant and really done it over. And that brought a lot of people, a lot of families to Temple Terrace, and our property values went up. Well, we had everything lined up, but for some reason, we lost by a vote or two on, on getting that done. What it would have done was that, that's the prettiest land probably in Hillsborough County, on the other side of the river, right here, at the dead end of White Way, over here. I used to fish it, drive it years ago. I'm born and raised in the area here. And just a beautiful area. And we were gonna put the big ends, and it would have been, it would have been the diamond of Temple Terrace. And the county was willing to turn it over to the Temple Terrace to use it. Temple Electric Company was gonna build the bridge, it was gonna go right through, across the river at White Way, where we could get to the rec center, all the people in Orange River, River Run, Roland Terrace, the other communities over there. And eventually, we lost it by a vote or two, and it got shelved, and pretty much that ended the annexation, too, because people on the other side of the river, they started going against it, because it really hurt us on the other side. But it made the newspapers, we were able to drive in a golf cart, to go shopping, they were gonna have a back way into the shopping plaza over here by the, the school and everything. I mean, it was great. Bicycled, I mean, we didn't have to get on the highway. It was great. We need to look at something like that to market Temple Terrace. It just takes time. It ain't gonna take a lot of money, because you could probably still get Temple Electric Company to fund it, that part of it, and you'd probably get the county to do something with that, because that land is just sitting dormant. It's just an ideal to market this, to help bring property values out, to up, to get more revenue in for you all, to be able to do what you're trying to do. The other thing, and I've been pounding it like a rock, is we need to try to annex some of these tracks of land. I believe we're, I know we're providing water already, probably sewer out there on the other side of 301 and up to Fowler Avenue, and try to get a Home Depot or a Walmart in here. And you could give them tax incentives. You don't have to give them money, you simply just give them reduced rate on their taxes to bring them in. You could probably work with a big real estate brokerage firm to see if you can secure something like that. I know the city manager's probably familiar with stuff like that. We don't tie up money or resources. We just bring them in, we annex, we get the sales tax, we get the property tax revenue, and you can even put in there, if you're concerned about calls for service, like the chief for the shoplifting and stuff, you can put in there that don't have to hire a deputy or a police officer off duty, maybe a Friday and Saturday night every week for four or five hours, whenever the shoplifting's occurred the most. You can look at stuff like that. It's not gonna be a lot of burden for Temple Terrace to have something like that. It would be an asset. I, we're the only community, and I'll stress it again, with 20-some thousand people incorporated that does not have a Walmart, or a Home Depot, or a Lowe's. There's something wrong with that picture. Okay? There's something definitely wrong. And that's why I had so many people moving to Temple Terrace, and almost all of them left, because shopping was on their issue. And I just have one other thing to address real quick. I believe that, this is for the chief. How many officers are you down now?
Twelve.
Twelve. About 18 years ago, I wrote a policy for the sheriff's office, and it was a Reserve Three program. And I don't know if you have anything like this, but I highly recommend it to help you under the environment out there right now, the atmosphere of trying to recruit police officers and keeping them, because you're a smaller agency, you know, you don't, probably don't pay as much as the big ones, I know that for a fact. I wrote a Reserve Three program, which the sheriff's office adopted, they used it for court services and the civil division automatically. I got a phone call the other day, they're using it for everything at the sheriff's office now. What it does is you hire back retired law enforcement officers, we have to wait a year, but you save a fortune, because you, you don't pay any kind of retirement. And if it's part-time, there is no health care. We found out that a lot of deputies that were in the drop, or close to retiring, and didn't do the drop, they just wanted more time off. They didn't mind working a few days a week, but they just wanted more time for either their wife was sick, or their kid or something, and they were old and they had enough retirement. So they would retire. Now, they're hiring them back now, they're gonna put them at all the schools. I got a phone call the other day thanking me, and I wrote that thing 18 years ago, and it's being used hard. There's a lot of agencies doing that right now. It's just a tool that you can use, because until, and I know it's impossible right now, but until you can get the start and pay up, you're gonna lose them to other agencies. Pinellas County is paying them $56,000 for retirees with six years on to go work the schools. So it's gonna hurt, it's gonna hurt Temple Terrace worse. And you gotta figure a way to market, to try to retain some of your officers, and maybe bring some other ones in part-time. And they keep the certification, so it's a good thing. Anyway, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Balaban. And just with the comments you've made, I know we've been working with MPO, as I, as I look at your signup sheet, you mentioned bike paths as well. We've been working with MPO, and I know on the Morris Bridge, we are in the plan this year to have some of those bike paths extended. And as you speak about golf course community, I had to smile. I know our city manager has been working arduously with FDOT to help get our community connected with golf carts. And I don't know if Mr. Stevenson would like to just say a couple words about his, his work, and one of our challenges, of course, are the state roads, that we need FDOT's permission to, and some adjustments in crossing paths. Mr. Stevenson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Those are, those are all great ideas. They've been on the table for a long time. I've been working on a Lowe's or a Home Depot for the last couple of years. We just about had them here, and then they backed out at the last minute. So to let you know, nobody would want a Home Depot or a Lowe's any more than me, because I could spend hours on just walking around the building. But my wife doesn't let me go with her, because I spend too much time in there. But all the bike paths, we do have a, a transportation improvement list, if you would, that has a bike component to it. And some of the trails and whatnot that you have, have mentioned are certainly on that list. The challenge with some of this stuff is funding, and that's where we're trying now. We just had a meeting a couple weeks ago with the MPO, and we basically asked them, is why is Tampa getting all the money? What are we doing that Tampa, what are we not doing that Tampa is doing? So we've got a few things that was fed to us by the MPO, and again, we keep this priority transportation list for Temple Terrace going. And it's a, it's a kind of a revolving list. As we see a priority come up, it kind of moves up into the list. But it is also geared towards funding for the whole county. So it's difficult, but you need to be a little bit more convincing, and with the help of the mayor, who has interjected her two cents, I think we're, we're bound to make some progress there with some funding. So bicycling is real important to me, in creating that bike ride around town. I don't know if you know this, but we are a golf course community, obviously, and we do have provisions for people to use golf carts on city streets. The only caveat to that is, is they can't cross either county roads or DOT. Getting DOT to give you the ability to cross a DOT road is very difficult. I've been talking to them for about five, six years about this. Their criteria, their design criteria, believe it or not, are created to discourage golf carts crossing the road now. It sounds crazy, and here's, here's the argument that I've given to DOT, to DOT, is that you will allow an electric, electric wheelchair. That must be the plate in my head.
I think the three minutes is up.
I know you gave me the microphone, man, the mayor gave me the microphone. Getting DOT and their design criteria to allow us across 56, Fowler Avenue, it doesn't make any sense, because they will set up the, an intersection with a crosswalk, and let an electric wheelchair cross, but they won't let a golf cart cross.
I just wanna add something to that. They did give, and they, Councilman Ross can confirm that, Sun City did give across 301 the golf carts to go to Super Walmart.
Yes.
So they did approve it.
Yes.
The other reason I stress White Way here, the dead end of pedestrian golf cart bicycle bridge, we can avoid DOT for everything between, we got the tunnels that go across lawyer parkway, you could pretty much cover everything on this side of 56th Street, and everything be, what, north and south to Fowler Avenue to the river, by using those tunnels. We get more use of the tunnels.
Yeah, we actually have a surface crossing for golf carts, believe it or not. It's given by the county, not DOT.
Right.
But the county right here at Glen Arvin. There's not one down at Burlingame, but people still cross there. But there is a surface, a legal, signed, surface crossing for golf carts right here. So there are sections of town that are very connected with golf carts, and we've got a couple areas that are very isolated with golf carts. We've been trying to work with DOT, and I've made that argument to DOT about Sun City stuff. We'll get there. But it's like, I make some headway, and then in two years, there's a new secretary down there. So I gotta start all over again.
Well, if we don't get there soon, I mean, using a wheelchair around instead of...
Well, that'll work. But anyway, thank you much.
Well, and Mr. Balaban, I'll just briefly comment on one other item with recruiting officers, and he's in the room, and he's probably one of the most humble servant leaders I've ever had the pleasure to work with. But Chief Almano's work in our community, and I will name specifically around Boys and Girls Club, is getting notoriety all over our community. I had a fraternity from USF reach out to me. I sat and had lunch yesterday with 41 young men, all ROTC, the majority of them are criminal justice majors. And they are chomping at the bit for an opportunity. They said they're doing no other service projects next year, it will be all Boys and Girls Club all the time. And when I said, well, I'd love to introduce you to our chief, I mean, there's a guy saying, win, win, we'll be there. So I think because of the work chief is doing to lay groundwork and be such a servant leader, that is how we're gonna recruit and retain young people who really have a service mindset. And you're right, as a smaller entity, a smaller agency, there will always be that opportunity and challenge with competitive wages. And I think one of the great blessings we have is we have an absolute excellent police chief, an excellent, absolutely excellent fire chief, who invests in the men and women they have with training and development. And that's one of the, that's one of the things that make people stay. The millennials are telling us, I will come and work for you, just as long as I'm being challenged, I'm learning, and I'm garnering leadership opportunities. And I think both of the men that we have at the helm in those two agencies are providing that. So where we know we have challenges and opportunities, I think we, we really address it with the kind of leadership that we're providing in our city, but it's a great point. Are there any other members of the public who would like to address council this evening? I would ask council members if you have any comments for the, for the good of the order.
Since you're giving me the eyeball, I'll take the... Just one question that was posed earlier by Mr. Noonan. In my 20-year-or-so recollection being involved in the city, there's never been a mayor that's vetoed anything. That's going back, Mayor Barford for eight years, Mayor Barford, Mayor Franti for eight years, and myself for four years. There's not been one vetoed by the mayor. So I will tell you, having sat in that seat for four years, it would be, my personal opinion is, it would be much better served when the mayor has a say at the table, because most residents call the mayor because they think it's a strong mayor government like Tampa and others. And a lot of times I would tell them, I agree with you, but I don't vote. So perception is that the mayor's running the city, and the mayor has the most responsibility of all the elected officials, but the mayor does not have a say at the table as far as a vote. Mayor's very effective, she's done a fantastic job to this point, very impressive. But that seat can be much more effective. Past mayors I've spoken to, Mayor Barford, Mayor Franti, have had the same sentiments that it's not a power grab, it's basically everybody's at a level playing field at that point in time. So, you know, just my personal opinion on it. And aside from that, you asked if we want to talk about anything. And aside from that, you asked if we want to talk about anything. The charter's coming up, and I'm glad to see all of you here this evening. I wish there were more people here. But more importantly, what's going to be facing us here in the very short future, something that's, we've been challenged with over many years, is the redevelopment. And unfortunately, it's not taken off the way it's anticipated to take off. The only opportunity right now has been a rental community. And most folks in the community in our city have indicated they don't want any more apartments. I will tell you that along with the mayor, Councilmember Boss, and member Donahue, along with the city manager, yesterday took a field trip to one of the Richmond Group properties, and it's nothing what I expected. It felt like a resort. The outside of the building looks okay, but the inside was extremely impressive. They're not subsidized. They said Temple Terrace would be a luxury community, and it speaks for itself. They even had a pet spa inside of it. So, there is, they said that the owner is very involved. Their main headquarters is in West Shore. They put up communities all over this area, and it's nothing what I expected. So I would urge each and every one of you to take a trip and look at the property that's down there. Now, you know, the devil's in the details, and once we go down that path, we will ask some more questions. But it's certainly a start, and there's folks in the community that say, "We don't want apartments. We don't want them." And I've been one of those because we have a lot of apartments in our community. We have a redevelopment that is eating the city alive right now. Vacant properties sitting on the corner, dilapidated. There is a developer, a commercial developer, has signed on with the city in a due diligence period, has taken over three acres. That's going to be a commercial development. And he's trying to line up businesses and opportunities. So far, I think I've heard there's a bank. And I assure you, if you can move residential component into that area, that developer will have a much easier time bringing in quality businesses that we will frequent. Where you live, you want it to be convenient to your lifestyle. Most of my shopping is outside of Temple Terrace. I go to Home Depot, you know, we'll go to Sam's. The small shops, the restaurants are great, but I have to literally get in my car and get on the interstate and go somewhere. It's not convenient. So, we just need to make it more convenient, and we need to sort of rejuvenate. That quarter or Fowler 56th Street are doing fine, but that quarter's been dilapidated for so long. And this property's been marketed for well over 13 years out there, and nobody's knocking. These folks that, "We don't want this," that, "Okay, what do you want? Bring it." Nothing's coming. Even the broker's saying this is what's out there. So we have to make a decision. Either we're going to make this property a portion of it a residential community, or we're going to do nothing. But what we don't want to do is encourage our real estate brokers to bring forward the proposals that they have on the table, and then when they get to the table, we beat them up and kick them. Because we get a bad reputation when we do that. If you don't want to tell them ahead of time before all this effort, money, and hard work is put out there. So, I would encourage all of you, this is everybody that's sitting up here, and many people in the community, the most important issue, talked about issue in this city is redevelopment. And it's been in front of us for the last 15 years, and we've got to get this thing off the ground. So, we have an opportunity. If this commercial component takes off, there's an opportunity for a residential component. But we represent the community and the citizens, so that's why I'm having this conversation, saying, "Please, go look at it. And if you don't like it, tell us what you don't like." But I went, the other folks went, they can speak for themselves, but I was very impressed. Now, there's, I'm sure, more details that come out, which components come to Temple Terrace. We asked that question. They said it was luxury. The one bedrooms, this was the one in downtown, one bedroom started at $1,500. Two bedrooms are $2,300 and $2,500. That's a nice product. And they're not subsidized. So, that's just a little flavor. But walking through this place, you felt like you were in a country club. It didn't look like a typical apartment community. Nothing like an apartment. It looked more like condos, upscale condos, or resort. It was really, really impressive. So, I just encourage each and every one of you, if you have time, get with the city manager, set up a time, and take a trip down there. It took us about an hour to tour it. It was, I mean, it's worth the time, and it's certainly one of the biggest challenges that sit before us. But aside from that, thank you for the opportunity to speak, and thank you all for taking the time to be here tonight. Thank you.
They have a couple, this one happens to be on South Morgan Street, 124 South Morgan Street. They also have one out on Hillsborough near Racetrack Road, which is a different style of theirs. It's, you can look up the Richmond Group, they have a couple different products. I think the one on Hillsborough is called Sedona. There's one they're building now, if you want to see from the start to the finish. There's one they're building out in Brandon, I'm not sure that, I don't recall where they said that was.
I apologize, Councilman Ross.
We have a little break in the action.
We have a short break as tapes are changed in the machine. So we will stand at recess, and thank you.
I thought he was just waving at me.
But you didn't wave back.
I'll wait for the red flashing light. And we're back. I don't see the red flashing light, though. I think Councilman Tralora covered the downtown issues quite thoroughly. It's something that needs to be taken care of, needs to start moving ahead. So I don't want to reiterate everything he said, but it's right on point. I do, obviously, we're going to have a lot of stuff on the ballot this year. There's state amendments, there's elections for council people, and there's going to be our charter amendments that are going to be on there. And I, again, I've said this from the beginning, I think the former government we have right now is appropriate. Like when a member runs for mayor, they know the mayor doesn't have a vote. I think that works well for our city because the mayor is the face of the city. It works well in that the mayor has the ability to go ahead and express their opinion on an issue, but they don't vote one side one way or the other on an issue, which could create a divided community. We certainly have issues here where some points not always look upon favorably by 30% of the population, 40% of the population, and both people are on either side. With the mayor not having a vote in any of those issues, the mayor stays neutral. The mayor is not impacted by this and still can represent everyone in the city without taking a particular side on an issue. So I've said it from the beginning, I'm opposed to this. I'm very happy with the work that the committee has done to come up with everything they did. I know they worked long and hard at it. There are a couple of technical changes that we need to get done, and probably was last done in 2006, I believe. So that's a good amount of time to wait. But again, that's my opinion on the charter. I think the mayor is the voice and face of the community and should stand as speaking for everyone and not particularly on one side or another of an issue. And that's my feeling on that issue. But the downtown redevelopment, that's important, that's a priority. We hopefully have got our funding in place that we'll take care of to give us a little bit of leeway to get things done, and hopefully we'll move forward with some more projects and get more people that are interested in putting stuff in a bunch of different pieces of property that, you know, can be very eclectic. When you compare the river to the corner of 56th and Bush, it's two different looks, two different ideals, two different feels. So, keep the offers coming.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you very much. If you see me shivering, it's not that I'm nervous, I'm freezing. So, first of all, I'd like to thank Colonel Ritter for his insightful presentation. I always love listening to those historical presentations about Temple Terrace, and thank you so much for taking the time to do that. I'd also like to thank the city staff, who I realize has been at work now for probably 12 or 13 hours, and you're here listening to us drone on, so thank you very much. And most of all, I'd like to thank the citizens who's taken the time out of your life to come down and take an interest in the city. Thank you, Don, for all your input. And so, then for those of you watching, I'll be brief. I won't talk about redevelopment because I think Councilmember Tralora and Boss have done an excellent job of that already. I have a similar mindset as theirs, I think they're spot-on. I just want to tell you briefly, and I feel like I'm preaching to the choir in this room because I think the majority of you know some of these things that are going on, but there's people watching on television or on YouTube who maybe know this stuff. So, real briefly, a couple of good things that are going on in the city. We have struggles. We have the redevelopment, yes, we do. We have traffic issues, of course we do. We do have struggles. But we also, in the background behind these struggles, have some very good things going on. This is an amazing, wonderful city, and it's getting better all the time. It really is. Even though we have these struggles, there's a lot of good stuff going on that we don't spend as much time talking about. We are about to begin construction this summer, hopefully, on a renovation to the rec center, an extensive renovation to what was once the premier gem in the city will be again here very soon. We're about to embark on a very extensive renovation of that facility to bring it back to the status that it used to be. So that's funded. Well, I'd say it's funded. We, the first year, we've put money towards that. In this budget, it's a multi-year project, but it's a go. It's passed, it's green, we're going. The boardwalk on River Hills Park, that's underway. I don't know if the construction's underway, but that's been funded. That's coming too. So the boardwalk will be renewed, and that beautiful park will have a nice new boardwalk. The redevelopment we've talked about, the river quality. I serve on the Hillsborough County River Board that consists of one Temple Terrace council person, a county commissioner, and a council member from the city of Tampa, and I serve on that. The river is the healthiest it's been in decades. Both the Lower River and the Middle River in Hillsborough, or in Temple Terrace, is doing wonderfully. And there's a lot of reasons for that. We can't claim, you know, "Oh, it's just because it's Temple Terrace City Council." But part of it is the city of Temple Terrace, and our Riverwatch Task Force Chairman, Nathan Redmond, is here tonight. And part of it is due to that group and his efforts and the efforts of those who have come before him, along with city staff. There's things that the city has done that have contributed greatly to the quality of the river. Some of it's not jazzy, you don't see it on the front page of TBT because nobody cares that we bought a new truck. But some of the equipment that we buy, excuse me, that is used to vacuum out the storm drains, we just bought this new device that does a better job and can reach deeper into the storm drains to vacuum debris and blockage out of the storm drains. Well, guess what? When that is kept cleaner, when we get the rains, that debris doesn't wind up in the river anymore because the storm drains go to the river. And when we inspect what's called the outfalls, which are the locations where the storm drains empty into the river, and we inspect those by boats, the last inspection we did after the rainy season, we expected to see a lot of debris around each of these outfalls. Guess what? We didn't. We saw very little at any of them because the city staff and the equipment is keeping these storm drains clean. So, a lot of these things are to the credit of the city manager, the city staff. You don't hear about this stuff. You don't hear about the work that goes on day in, day out at the police department, the fire department, public works, code enforcement. We hear more because we're a little closer. But I can tell you that just over the past few years, we have made real progress in this city. And we will continue to make progress, and we will get this redevelopment project done. We will stabilize our tax base, improve our finances, and stand by. In 10 years, you will not recognize this city as the same city it is now. Thank you.
And I'd just like to thank all of the citizens who are here this evening. I will just do a short addendum as we talk about our CRA area, our downtown area. One of the big questions we have heard over and over is, "It sounds great that you're buying this property. Are you going to hold this property or turn it over to someone else that will run it down?" The Richmond Group has a 30-year history, and they hold their properties. The first build they did in this area was on Route 60 behind, they said it's a terrible landmark and we don't use it in our marketing brochure, but the way they described it, I knew exactly where it was. It's on Route 60 into Clearwater right behind the Hooters. But they hold their properties. The original, I see, I didn't know it was the original. But behind the original Hooters. But they hold their properties. They have two banks of properties. And again, the luxury properties, absolutely not subsidized at all. I may be talking more to the female residents of Temple Terrace, but the finishes were unbelievable. It was granite to the extreme, it was crown molding, it was, as Councilman Tralora spoke, the breezeways had seats that you would sit in and outdoor fire pits and every amenity you could imagine. This in no way is like any rental property that I believe is currently available. It is something that will attract professionals. It's something, I think, a product that some of our senior adults who are saying, "I'm done with a 3,000 or 3,500 square foot home, and I'm ready to downsize." This is something that our residents could move to and be extremely comfortable. Anything additional?
I'd love to say nothing. Please, thank you. Are you finished?
I'm done.
I'm sorry. I just want to echo, you know, you've got a great staff of directors. I don't know that anybody is missing here this evening. There may be one or two. But you've got city employees here to show up for these town hall meetings. We, I would, for the next one, we have routinely done this for the last year and a half, once a quarter. Get your neighbors involved, have your neighbors come out. The more people that we have from the community, the better. I'd like to thank my staff for being here. These guys do a great job for you. Gil, thank you very much for your little input with the charter review. I have to echo the council that's sitting up here about the redevelopment. We're going to get it done. I'm committed to get it done. I think all my staff knows that. They hear this just about every other Tuesday, we talk about redevelopment. I am certainly committed to do this. And I think Richmond's product that they build shouldn't be underestimated as far as being just an apartment complex. We were down there yesterday with them. They sort of discounted the notion that we're using the word apartment. They don't even use that word in their building. So, just to let you know. Those of you that want to go, you want to take a field trip, I'd be more than happy to arrange it. You guys need to spread the word that we're hoping to make a move on this here very shortly. There will be a presentation to the CRA board and the council here coming up very shortly. So, stay tuned, please, and tell your neighbors to stay tuned. So, thanks, guys. I appreciate you guys for being here.
Thank you all. Have a great night.